We'll call the meeting to order. We'll note that Commissioner Oltmans is absent. All other commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
President Johnson, I do have one thing I'd like to add to the agenda if you would see fit to do so. It is an equal opportunity agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. It is related to a low, no-interest loan through Rough Rider Electric for the Public Safety Center.
Okay. Why don't we add that right after the financial report? We'll just call that Item D and we'll make reports Item E.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I do have two items that were removed from the agenda earlier today or at the request of the applicants. There's a 455 timetable agenda, pilot request for Lincoln Park Townhomes. They have requested to remove that from this agenda. Also, Item 8B2 is a development agreement for West Ridge, second addition. That development agreement has also been removed.
B2?
8B2, yes.
8B2, got it. Anything else? Any other changes? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the order of business as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? We'll vote then. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll move to the non-timetable agenda. The first item there has to do with plat annexation and Mr. Coling will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This ordinance is on for second reading and final passage. This ordinance would include within city limits the Public Works Facility plat. This is the approximately 25-acre parcel on which the Public Works building, the new Public Works building is now being constructed. I would bring it within city limits. The city is the only property owner involved in this annexation. We have published the request and notified the county as required by North Dakota Sentry Code. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading and city staff would recommend approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Is there anyone from the public would like to comment regarding proposed ordinance 1548? If you'd like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments by or questions by city commissioners?
President, I'll move that we approve second reading and final passage of 1548.
Is there a second? We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B is an agreement with Southheart regarding processing their wastewater and Mr. Coling will introduce that item also.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. The agreement before you has been negotiated between city staff and the City of Southheart. It does provide for the city to begin treating wastewater from Southheart once our new water reclamation facility is completed. As you know, Dakota Prairie Refinery is building a sewer line and a lift station out on the west end of town. The Southheart plan is to construct a sewer line from Southheart to that lift station or to that approximately the intersection of Highway 10 and 116. They are doing all of the construction on that. I believe some of the pipe was being laid down earlier this month. But the city under this agreement would accept the wastewater for treatment from Southheart and Southheart would pay for that according to the wastewater schedule that we have discussed over the last several meetings. City staff would recommend approval and be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions by commissioners here or other city staff? I know this has been an item that has been worked on behind the scenes for several, several months by both City of Southheart and the City of Dickinson. I think this is a, really a very good endeavor that both communities are embarking on. We get an opportunity for both communities really to reduce or eliminate their reliance on lagoons. And we've had a rough spring this year. We know what lagoons can be like when they get overloaded and overworked and we're looking forward to them being part of our past.
Mr. Kessel. President Johnson, just a couple of other things. This will alleviate the City of Southheart's need to do, to have staff to operate a lagoon and/or treatment facility and will also free them from the responsibility of EPA regulations in the future. This is a, should be a big concern for smaller operators as the EPA tends to continually restrict discharge amounts of certain chemicals. Our facility has been designed in a way to anticipate those EPA standards being increased and therefore should help out the City of Southheart in the long run as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any other comments? Well, hearing none, would there be a motion regarding the approval of this agreement?
Move to approve agreement, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You have the financial report in your packet. Mr. Kessel, any comments you'd like to make regarding it?
Thank you for the opportunity, President Johnson. The financial report, as you mentioned, is attached. The staff has been doing diligent efforts to try and maintain these reports as accurately as possible in the absence of staff. We are doing our best to do that. I think that report reflects accurately what's happening. I will say that we did interview a candidate and make an offer to a candidate to fill the deputy city administrator position. If they accept, we will get back to a regular schedule in terms of presenting the financial report in a similar manner that has been done in the past. So with that, I'll try and accept any questions and return responses at a later date.
Are there any comments or questions?
President, the one thing that I would note that the public might be interested in is that it appears sales tax revenues are strong this first few months of the year. Correct?
That's correct, Mr. Jackson. I actually have a report later on that will not only talk about this year's but last year's as well.
Okay.
Yeah, through the first four months, we're up just over 15 percent and so that's a pretty strong gain at this point. And the hospitality tax and the occupancy tax are both up also. Occupancy or hospitality is nearly 15 percent and occupancy is nearly 16 percent and so those are also good signs. Any other comments or questions on the financial report?
I'll move we approve the report, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll do Item D, which is the Rough Rider Electric loan. And Mr. Kessel, are you introducing that?
Thank you, President Johnson, I am. We have two pieces to this agreement. The first is an equal opportunity agreement. This essentially says that the City of Dickinson will not discriminate against any employee or applicant because of race, color, or any protected classes, whether that's a contractor we hire to work on the facility. It also says that we'll comply with the State Civil Rights, or excuse me, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and so forth. The assurance agreement that is also included is, uses similar language but also says that we'll essentially use the property for its intended purpose. The intended purpose would be to operate a public safety center. Both our fire and police administration and then fire response would be held out of those facilities along with dispatch as well. This loan would be a million dollars as its amount and be a 10-year no-interest loan. So that's, this document helps us make the application for that loan. We have to have the application complete before ground baking will take place. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there comments or questions? So we would just, if we're in favor of a million dollars zero percent loan, we would move a motion approving this agreement.
That's correct. I think it'd be beneficial to have a motion to approve the equal opportunity and assurance agreements by the United States Department of Agriculture as it relates to the public service center.
Would the commissioner care to move that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Stookard and Mr. Steiner, second in the motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll let you do your reports and then we'll go to the timetable agenda.
Okay. Thank you, President Johnson, and I should also say thank you to Fire Chief Seavock. He is championing the loan documents with, in relation to that last, last agenda item. There are some thank you notes that are included in the agenda and then an annual report as provided by Sunrise Youth Bureau. As you may recall, we do provide a subsidy to the Sunrise Youth Bureau. That is a fairly new subsidy and so they are reporting on their activities throughout the year. The next report that I have then is the 40th Street. As you are well aware, we have been negotiating with landowners along 40th, the proposed 40th Street project. That project includes water sewer, roadway, and stormwater plans. It is a difficult project in, from an engineering perspective and we are in, within the timeframe for people to let us know if they want a special assessment district to be created. If they want to protest it out, they have to formally let us know in writing. We have received two formal notices of protest, both from Two's Construction and from Northern Improvement is the other. That, when you add up the totality of the land that would be in protest, it has to equal 50 percent in order to not move forward with the special assessment district. So far, those two protesting does not negate the special assessment district. They have until, all the rest of the property owners have until June 13th to notify us whether or not they are going to protest or not. If we do not receive adequate protest, then we'll move forward with the special assessment district and the plans for 40th Street. So, any questions related to that project at all?
Mr. Kessel, maybe, not a question, but I believe we're asking adjacent property owners to not foot the bill for 100 percent of the cost, correct?
That's correct. Right now, the proposal that we have made is that the city will cover approximately 70 percent of the cost of all related construction and that the landowners would cover about 30 percent of the cost. It's a several-million-dollar project. I think we're asking the property owners collectively to come up with around $2 million and the city is putting in approximately seven.
The reason I ask the question is I know we're going to be looking at a development agreement later on this evening that is for raw and just developing land and those developers are being asked to foot the bill for a significant portion of those costs, correct?
That is correct. We have several cases within the city where we have developers on either side of the road who want to develop at different timeframes. And I call these friction points and they happen with regularity. Or we have a situation where a developer wants to move forward on land on one side and the landowner on the other side does not. And that causes issues with trying to create roadways or infrastructure improvements. And they're all dealt with individually on a case-by-case basis.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we're asking property owners to pay for the cost of some of the infrastructure, in this case, just doing it in a different way, with special assessments. But it's a similar thing with the city sharing some of the cost and the property owners adjacent paying for a good portion of the cost.
In a lot of cases, the split is oftentimes reversed. In 40th, this is, we've got more money in this deal than we do in many others in like situations.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, you mentioned the city at 7 million. I thought it was total of 7 million. That's more.
Commissioner Steiner, you may be accurate. I'd have to pull those numbers out. The estimate, I believe, was a $9 million project, seven from the city and two from the landowners. It could be a $7 million project, five from the city and two from the landowners. Is it second? Okay.
That's correct. Total project cost is a little over 7 million, estimated at 7.
Five and two. Thank you. So it's five and two then. Thank you for that clarification. I have several other updates unless you want me to go to the timetable.
We'll go to the timetable. We'll come back. So at 4:45, we have a graduation and you're introducing that item?
Thank you, President Johnson. As you may know, we've had Ms. Nomenek coming up and providing you with an update on our progress of hiring staff. In some cases, things go according to plan and we're able to hire fairly quickly, but in other cases, we are not. And it's difficult, in most cases actually, to fill positions. Early on, we had a lot of our middle management was enticed away by job offers that where companies could offer more money or better benefits or something of that order. That created somewhat of a vacuum within the city. We have filled a lot of those positions, but they may not have been filled with people who had experience that are typical. Not to say that they're not great employees, they just didn't have necessarily the typical education or experience that the people that they were replacing had. So in light of that, we developed a course. The course was called Effective Supervisory Practices. We utilized some materials that we received from ICMA. ICMA is the International City Counting Managers Association. It's a group that I belong to and we ordered several of these books and the workbook that was associated with it. We had several people take, participate in that course over several months. Some of, I'm just going to read some of the contents, the chapter titles that we went over. They include supervisory leadership, ethics, strategic planning, management, and evaluation, organizing your work time, working with budget, team building, communicating with employees, selecting, onboarding, and developing new employees, accountability in the workplace, evaluating performance, motivating employees, leading change, ensuring a harassment-free and respectful workplace, workplace safety, security, and wellness, and quality customer service. So what I'd like to do today is just recognize the initial group of graduates of this class. We do intend to offer this course within the city several other times and maybe even take individual chapters of this course and offer them as brown bags so that staff can come forward and receive pieces of this training ongoing. So as I call your name, if you wouldn't mind coming up and receiving a little token of appreciation for the time and effort that was put in by these staff members, I would appreciate that. You just slide one over. Thank you. The first is Ed Corton. I know it's a surprise to all of you that Mr. Corton could graduate, but he did, so I.
Congratulations, Ed. Thank you for your.
We graded on a curve. Becky Hoff couldn't be with us, but Dusty, Chief Dossinger's going to come in Hurstad. And Matt Coling.
You don't have to stand. You're on practice.
I should also mention that Ms. Nomenek and Mr. Coling have volunteered to help facilitate ensuing classes. So between the three of us, we intend to offer this course, as I mentioned, either as a full course as we did this time or in piecemeal as brown bag seminars. So I just want to say thank you to all of the participants. I learned probably as much as they did throughout the course material.
Okay. Well, it's good move. I think all of you are to be commended to take the time. We know you're really busy. The city staff is understaffed and we have lots of projects going on in addition to the regular day-to-day tasks that have to be done. But so I just want to thank you and congratulate you for taking the time to improve your leadership and your management skills. Mr. Kessel, we'll let you continue with your reports.
Thank you, President Johnson. The next is a water vendor rate. We are, we have a document that we'll be sending out. We just, in light of the agreement we signed with the State Water Commission, we will have to raise our rates at the water vendor. They are currently going to charge us $20,000. That was the rate we were charging at our water vendor. So we'll be sending out a letter to all bulk water permit holders and to people who hold accounts for charging at the bulk water center to increase our rates. We'll also be debating whether or not we'll continue to operate the water vendor in its current location on Broadway when we get a reuse facility opened. And that's predicated upon the wastewater treatment facility coming online in a few months. We have also engaged KLJ to do a water rate study and we hope to have the results of that study within the next couple of weeks. The next is a fixed route bus service. I did provide a brief update at the last commission meeting. The North Dakota Department of Transportation has made an offer to fund a plan or a study to review a fixed route transit study for the City of Dickinson. There's $150,000 that they have on the table, but there is a local match. That local match is about $37,500. I have been in contact with Ms. Radikowski from Public Transit and she's going to make the request at the subsidy meeting that we cover the cost of the local match. This is a topic that has been discussed for several years and what a fixed route system is, is basically a bus route that would, we would establish bus stops around the community in locations that would be fixed and then a bus or several buses would travel around that system, picking people up and delivering them to other fixed route locations throughout the community. The next is a public safety center, the Guaranteed Maximum Price or GMP by J.E. Dunn. Is, we intend to present that to the city commission at the next city commission meeting. They have, I'll pass around some documentation that they have provided us. We are very, very close to having that GMP established on the public safety center. If the city commission agrees to the GMP, that will be presented in two weeks, we could begin construction on that facility shortly thereafter. And when I say shortly, I mean within 10 days potentially. The next is, I just wanted to announce that we expect to have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission and we have a current opening on the Special Assessment Commission. If there are interested parties who would like to be on either of these commissions, please fill out the citizen interest form. You can find that form on the city's website at www.dickinsongov.com. If you fill that out, we'll then review that and make a recommendation to the city commission for appointment. I also did a brief sales tax collection, just totaled up some numbers that are available on the North Dakota State Treasurers website, if you look them up. And I just wanted to report to you the North Dakota sales tax collections at the end of 2013. I found them interesting. I looked up the oil hub cities of Dickinson, Williston, and Minot. I did throw in Watford City, although not recognized as an official oil hub city. They certainly are a community that operates with distinction in western North Dakota. In terms of sales tax collections, this does not include purchases, just sales tax collections. Watford City experienced a decrease in sales tax collections in 2013 compared to 2012 of 3.3 percent. Minot received a decrease of 3.91 percent. Williston received a decrease of 5.79 percent. And Dickinson's increase was 15.52 percent. When you compare this to some of the other North Dakota populous cities like Fargo, Bismarck, and Grand Forks, Fargo had an increase of 1.96 percent. Bismarck had an increase of 2.66 percent. Grand Forks had an increase of 2.57 percent. I thought I'd check with the counties within the oil hub cities just to see if there's any differences and there were some slight differences. McKenzie County, where Watford City is located, even though Watford City had a decrease of almost 3.5 percent, Watford, or McKenzie County had an increase of 2.2 percent. Ward County, where Minot is located, had a 3.48 percent decrease. Williams County had a 6.04 percent decrease. And that's the county, of course, where Williston is located. And then Stark County had an increase of 11.53 percent. I thought those were interesting and I just wanted to report those to the city commission. I will not make any formal extrapolations from that, but I found it interesting that Dickinson and Stark County is bucking a trend in western North Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any other reports that you have?
Just two. I want to let you know that we're negotiating a mineral rights agreement. As we speak, we hope to present this to you at the next city commission meeting. It is for ground that the city owns on the southwest side of town. And then just a reminder that the success is always under construction. We are trying our best to inform the public of all the construction that's going on in the community. There are magnets available at City Hall at Utility Billings that you can join us on Facebook. There's also, you can, I'm not sure what the technical title is, but we do tweet at City of Dickens, hashtag City of Dickinson and we'll send you reports. Or you can go to the website, www.successisalwaysunderconstruction.com and sign up for it. Or you can go to the website, www.successisalwaysunderconstruction.com, and sign up for distribution, and we'll, we'll send you updates of what's going on. So that concludes my reports this evening. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions for the city administrator? Not, we'll go back to the timetable agenda. At 5:00, we have a presentation regarding the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library. I've got Sharon Kilzer's name here to make it, but I don't see Sharon. So substituting for Sharon is Dickinson native, Mr. Clay Jenkinson. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for taking some more time to talk with us a little bit about the great work that's being done with the Theodore Roosevelt Center on the campus of Dickinson State University. And I have a couple of allies here. One is President DC Costin, and he'll be coming up to join me here in just a moment. He wasn't able to come to the last meeting, and Sharon Kilzer and I were so gratified by the response that we had here and so eager to keep this dialogue going forward that we asked the president if he could make time in his schedule. He was somewhere else last meeting, and he's here today, and he'll be coming up in a minute. But I also wanted to just tell you that this project has been going on for about nine years. The building that we're talking about, the National Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Museum and Library, is something that really just emerged from the last legislative session. But before that, for many years, we've been digitizing all of Roosevelt's papers, and that includes cartoons and films and audio and newspaper clippings and scrapbooks and just everything that comes under the umbrella of Theodore Roosevelt, including all of his presidential correspondence. And we've made discoveries, one of which is really remarkable. In the vaults of the Library of Congress, we found a film that was made in 16-millimeter in 1919, the very year that Roosevelt died, and it was made here in North Dakota. And so I was just at the Library of Congress, looking around at their film collection on Roosevelt. They have about 150 items. And I discovered this film called "In the Roosevelt's Badlands with Theodore Roosevelt", made by Herman Hagedorn, just a few months after Roosevelt's death. I asked them to digitize it. It turns out to be a very remarkable film. It's 30 minutes, black and white, made here in North Dakota in the Badlands. And Herman Hagedorn, who became his first grade biographer, gathered together his old friends, Joe Ferris and Sylvain Ferris and Bill Merrifield and Dutch Wanigan and Margaret Roberts, and they all came for the first ever Theodore Roosevelt reunion in Madora, and they filmed it. It's of extraordinary visual quality, and there are subtitles and so on. We've digitized it, and then we made a documentary about that documentary. But that's just the sort of thing that we're unearthing. It's not just going to change Roosevelt's studies nationwide. It's really going to deepen people's understanding of Roosevelt's time here in the Badlands of western North Dakota. And last time I showed you that first letter that he wrote the day after he arrived to his young wife, Alice. We're not just digitizing, we're making serious and important historical discoveries. So we have a national advisory board of extraordinary people that includes, from North Dakota, Claudia Berg of the Historical Society, and Valerie Naylor of the National Park. But nationally, it includes Simon Roosevelt and two great Roosevelt biographers, Henry Brands of the University of Texas and Kathleen Dalton of Massachusetts. And one of our advisors is here with me this week. His name is Joey King. Joey, raise your hand. Joey King, among other things, is of the King Ranch in Texas. He grew up on the famous King Ranch in Texas, and he's been leading a national consortium of liberal arts colleges as they make the transition from just physical libraries to electronic and digital materials in their curricula and in their, in their liberal arts college libraries. So Joey is here, and he wanted to come and see a little bit of this process. We're back for a couple of reasons. First of all, because President Costin was unable to be here last time. But I also wanted to just quickly tell you where we are with the planning. We said last time we'd hired this national consultancy group from Ohio, Hilfertie. I think you have materials that have been distributed to you that they produced for us. We're nearing the end of that process. They'll be back twice now, between now and 1st of August, and then they will be done. And what we asked them to do was to help, to come and listen, to listen to the mayor, to listen to people around the community, to listen to our faculty and staff and students, to listen to Roosevelt scholars and to the people in the National Park, and Randy Hudson-Buehler of the Theodore Roosevelt Madora Foundation, and just keep listening and see if they could discern what it is that we want and what it is that Dickinson can support. And the amazing thing is that they came saying, with a population of your size in a place so distant from Denver and Chicago and Philadelphia and New York, we're not sure what you can really justify by way of visitation. And their concern was that Dickinson may just not be big enough to support a national presidential library. But during the process, without being prejudiced by us, they've changed their minds, and they said Dickinson is growing. The leadership of Dickinson is producing a really enlightened oil boom community. The university is an anchor of the cultural life of Dickinson, and we now are no longer concerned about visitation. We're now concerned about making sure that this is the right scale, scope, mission, functionality. And so the sorts of questions we've been going over with them are, what's the relationship to the university? What's the relationship to the community, to the City Commission, to the CVB, to the population of southwestern North Dakota? What's the relationship to the Madora Foundation and the Madora Musical, to Mile City and Glendive, even as far away as Mount Rushmore? And they'll be coming in now with their report. And what they're telling us is, think big. You are going to be one of the great national centers of presidential studies, and the fact that this is not Denver or Boston is of no consequence, because you have this digital outreach, which will make up for any isolation that you may feel from a geographic point of view. So we're thrilled. And when that report comes in, we will want to share it with you. And one of the things that they're going to suggest is the site for the Roosevelt Center. We have been completely neutral about that and said to them, look around, ask lots of questions, and then tell us where you think this will be a monument to Dickinson, to Stark County, and to western North Dakota. So that's where we are with it, and we're just absolutely thrilled. This has been the most exciting three-month period in the history of the Roosevelt Center, and that's what led us to seek a second meeting with you. Now I want to present my CEO, President DC Costin, because he has been talking with the State Board of Higher Education and the System Office about how money should be received and how we should use them to go forward. President Costin.
Thank you, Clay, and President Johnson, commissioners, and other leaders of Dickinson. This really is a monumental development. Last year, near the end of the legislative session, the legislature took several actions related to this, put it in a couple of bills, but charged Dickinson State with leading an effort to create a presidential library. I'm not sure that the legislature quite understood what they were asking us to do. I'm not sure we quite understood it. We were fortunate to get some support for a planning effort, and the Hilfertie Group, along with their consultants, went through a very competitive national process, and we chose them to lead the effort. I think you should have materials. This was their draft report that came in about six weeks ago. They had several concepts through a broad set of community inputs, came down to a much tighter concept, and that, that's the concept which Clay referred, that they are moving forward to develop the final plans. As they come back with the plans, they will certainly be talking about the capital costs for construction for such a facility. It will also include plans for the long-term management, upkeep, programming, all those sorts of things. So there will be a full-blown business plan to go with it. The last session, the legislature pledged up to $12 million in two $6 million pieces provided in two different bills to go toward construction of the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library. To be able to access those funds, we must find $3 million of non-state funds to be able to access that 12 million. What has occurred when we started using presidential library is a quick understanding that a $15 million, if you take the 12 million plus three, $15 million is not going to be, is not going to do justice for what this needs to become. So at the point we are now, we're, we're wanting to be able to go back to the Legislative Assembly and be able to tell them that we have been successful in raising the $3 million, securing that, to get their full amount of 12 million, and then to be able to talk to them about the scope and scale of what they actually charged us to do and ask them for significant additional investment. That's what we're asking and what we're here about this evening, is to ask the Commission to consider committing that $3 million to allow us to be able to go back to the Legislative Assembly and say that, that that funding has been secured and be able to move forward with the conversation. That indeed is why we're here, and Clay and I, or Joey, whoever, stand ready to answer any additional questions that you might pose to us.
Thank you, Dr. Costin. Any comments or questions by commissioners? I had an opportunity to, in between meetings here, City Commission meetings, to meet with Dr. Costin and Mr. Jenkinson. Since their last presentation, I've been given this a little bit of thought, that the Presidential Library is really a big deal for the City of Dickinson, really the state of North Dakota. And I think our city needs to step up to the plate and make a significant pledge here. If you think back, we've worked with DSU on the Bejou Activity Center. That was a $16 million project. The city committed $6 million, and I believe our $6 million has been fully paid up, our $6 million pledge. I think this is really, I know Hank Bejou is a big deal, but Teddy Roosevelt ranks right up there with him. And if we put $6 million into the Bejou Center, I, I think we ought to consider, over a period of time, putting upwards of $8 million into this. And it would come from the two sources of revenue that we normally use for these kinds of projects. One is from the 30% of the 1% sales tax, and the other's from, from the hospitality tax. And we have a portion of those funds committed to paying off our pledge or bond of the community center expansion. But there appears to be, in my mind at least, sufficient funds to cover both projects. And I updated the sales tax projections here a little while ago, and I have copies of the 30% and the hospitality projections. And these are, are essentially my projections that Tina Johnson helped me work up before she left. And I've updated the 30% sales tax fund, showing a 10% gain this year over last year. And you heard us say earlier in the meeting that through the first four months, we're up just over 15%. And then for each year thereafter, I show a 3% gain. And if, if you go all the way down to the, the bottom line, which would be the projected cash balance at the end of each year, you can see by, say, 2020, projecting about an $8.6 million balance in that fund. If you go over to the hospitality tax fund, which I've assumed an even more conservative sales tax growth by 2020, that's 1.7 million. So if my projections are correct, by 2020, we have an excess of $10.3 million in those two funds, and that's while we're making our bond payments to the community center. So, you know, if Dickinson continues to grow and actually just grow in a modest sense over the period of the next six or seven years, we should be able to cover an $8 million pledge if we were to go ahead and make that. And I think the way I would think about doing this is, is think in terms of two pledges. Pledge one, pledge the $3 million that Dr. Costin has requested. And pledge two would be a $5 million pledge. And of course, that would be contingent upon the legislature increasing the funding so we can build the appropriate library that would honor President Roosevelt. Is my time up? Any rate, I, I think that's the comments that I would make, and I would look to Mr. Kohling, you know, for his ideas or suggestions on maybe the appropriate resolution that we could do this in. But we'll stop there, and I'd like to kind of get the reaction from my fellow commissioners to, to this idea.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
You know, in just the last conversations that we've had, you know, two weeks ago and so on, and what we've been hearing along, you know, the last couple of years, that, you know, I, I think this is just a vital point for the community at this time, to bump up a playing field for us in the tourism industry. I mean, if this, if we're successful in this, I think that we can look back and say, this is the time that we made that decision that basically is going to benefit the entire southwest North Dakota and the entire state and the region together. You know, I look at the numbers of the visits and so on, and granted, we're a smaller community, but when you look at the radius that these people come in, I mean, why not throw in a tour of entire North Dakota along with us here? So I'm just excited about it. You know, I wish we could have a responsible legislature now, you know, because I think it's just gonna, it's just gonna grow the support on this here, and, you know, it's just gonna be exciting. Happy to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anybody else here to comment?
We would do this over a period of years again, right? The way we did?
That's the way I would envision it, that it's, it's maybe over a six, seven, eight-year period. And of course, one of the contingencies is that the project really does have to be a go, you know? But in terms of the dollars, it appears to me, we, we certainly can afford this. To those people who are new to their community, they'd probably say, well, why, why is Dickinson borrowing money to pay for wastewater treatment plants and lift stations and water towers? And you have money to do this? Well, the answer is, in municipal governments, you have dedicated funds. And these, the hospitality tax and the 30% of the sales tax are dedicated to capital projects for the social and, and economic betterment and visitation projects in the city. And they cannot be used for water towers and wastewater treatment plants. If they could be used, we probably would have. But we have these funds, and I think this is a very worthy project for these funds to support. Mr. Jackson?
You know, I think this is an opportunity that we really have to seize. I really do. I can see this being as big or bigger than you guys do. I can see this being a big thing. And I think the thing, besides the tourism part of it, the academic part of it, for DSU, I think it'd be a tremendous anchor for DSU, and I think that's really important to our community. I would like to see something else as a city, as we go forward. And I don't know if it's part of this. And I don't know if it's part of this approval process for this particular project or part of our regular budget process, but I'd like to see us take a broader, long-term look at hospitality tax, 30%, and look at some other things as well. But that's a digression tonight. It's just something that I'd like to see happen in the future overall with these dollars. But I am all in favor of doing what we're contemplating tonight.
Mr. Jenkinson, when we met in between meetings, you, I think, expressed to me the number of Presidential Libraries that exist currently in the United States. And then there is a difference between the way they're funded. Could you just review that again?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. There are 13 official Presidential Libraries. They began with Herbert Hoover. Strangely enough, readers like Theodore Roosevelt and Thomas Jefferson lived before this idea was invented. But Herbert Hoover did it, and every president since Hoover has an official national Presidential Library. And you probably know by law, they are, presidents are required to deposit their papers in their library, not in the Library of Congress, not at their alma mater, but in a specially designated Presidential Library, like the Reagan Library or the JFK Library. And this, of course, becomes a very significant issue with presidents like George W. Bush, where the papers number in warehouses of physical papers and then unbelievable amounts of electronic information. We would be the first actual digital, fully digital Presidential Library in the country, even in the world, if we do this. There are two types, as Mayor Johnson says. The 13 are administered by the National Archives and Records Administration, the National Archives, and they're official units of the United States government. We do not contemplate going that route in the short term. We want to join the other group, which is a smaller group, the new Jefferson Library at Monticello, and one of its people is on our National Advisory Board. Or the Lincoln Library in Springfield, one of its people is on our National Advisory Board, and be an independent entity but in perpetual association with Dickinson State University. This has some freedoms that the National Archives and Records Administration approach doesn't have. And frankly, we think that we'll be teaching those 13 original Presidential Libraries something about digitization. They're already contacting us to get advice from us about how to digitize their immense collections. And so that's the sort we want to create. And in doing so, we have some fundraising opportunities that they don't. We also have some burdens that they don't. Dr. Costin would be the first to tell you that our main function is operating funds for the digitization. This is quite an expensive business, and we don't come to you for support in any of this. We've gone to the state legislature. But it costs, to get Harvard's collection alone, which numbers about 75,000 items, photographs, scrapbooks, diaries, letters, et cetera, probably costs $1.7 million to digitize all that Harvard has. So this is not for the faint of heart. And as Dr. Costin said, if we'd known going in how deep a project this would become, we might have blinked. But here we are, and the state has been extremely generous. Former Senator Dorgan has embedded a small appropriation in the Library of Congress budget so that each year we can continue to complete that project. But we would be the 14th Presidential Library, the first fully digital library. And just to say one more word about that, this will be a tourism draw for North Dakota and an economic engine for western North Dakota. That's certain. But in my opinion, it has a much more important place here. It's part of the quality of life indicator of Dickinson, North Dakota. You know, oil booms are rough on communities. They put strain on communities. Dickinson is emerging as the class act of the oil boom. Dickinson is not the town I grew up in, and it is gaining in so many ways. I can imagine the university in 2030, the public library has done extraordinary work. And I think the Roosevelt Center could be one of the keystones of the quality of life index for Dickinson, North Dakota, along with the Activity Center and so on. And so I think that it actually is more important to Dickinson in terms of its quality of life than even the tourism potential, but that will be a not insignificant factor, I think.
Dr. Costin, I seem to recall that there's a key meeting coming up for the TR Center here later this month. Do I recall correctly?
Yes, sir. We have, I think most of you have worked with the legislative process. And if I talk about the budget section of the Legislative Assembly, you know what that is. It's the appropriations committees of each of the chambers, the last session plus leadership. They convene quarterly during the interim and can transact business. We have been invited to come to their meeting on June 25th to give them an update on where we are on this entire process. We anticipate having near final materials from Hillford at all at that point and giving them a good update on where things are.
So here's what I suggest after hearing the response of the fellow commissioners and the support. I would think we could place this on the agenda for the next meeting, which would be June 16th. And Mr. Coling, unless you have a better or different suggestion, I'm thinking a resolution of support, maybe spelling out, pledge one is $3 million, pledge two is $5 million, and as many, as much wiggle room as you can put in that resolution in case they don't go ahead with the project for whatever the reasons might be. But enough authority in there that the Legislative Budget Committee knows that the city of Dickinson will stand behind this project, should it, you know, go on to succeed. So what do you think? I mean, I know I hadn't discussed this with you, so you haven't had a lot of time to think about it, but...
Mr. President, we can certainly put something together for the next meeting. I imagine it would be a resolution of support from this body, and we'll work through the details in the next week or so.
What do you think about that? Would that, if it's formally act on on June 16th, is that gonna help you with your June 25th meeting?
It would create a wonderful, warm feeling in the Senate chambers of the state legislature, of the state legislature as that committee convenes. Yes, I think it would be, I think they would be very pleased to see that the support has come forth.
I wanted to just add just one thing to that. You know, when they gave us this sort of unexpected challenge, it was a little sooner than we would have actually wanted it had we been proactively seeking it. But now that it came, it put considerable pressure on us to meet the match and raise the money, and it diverted some attention from the basic work that we do digitizing Roosevelt's documents. If you saw fit to do this, and this is extraordinarily generous, more generous than I think we could have anticipated, this would not only settle some concerns at the state legislative level, but it would put the pressure back on them now at the next session to come forward with a significantly larger grant to finish the project. I don't think, as Dr. Costin said, I don't think they knew quite what they were saying when they said National Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library, $15 million, can't do it. And not even if construction costs were different from what they now are in western North Dakota. And I think this then returns the ball to their court, saying, if the city of Dickinson is that optimistic about this project and that willing to be the primary funding agent of the match, it's clear that this project has deep support within western North Dakota and Stark County and Dickinson. I think that would be the best news we could ever take in July 20, or June 25th to the committee.
Well, the, you know, the city would be taking some risk here by making this pledge. There are other groups in the community that have projects that they're pushing and I'm sure have been looking towards these same funds as, to fund their projects. But in my mind, again, this is the premier project available to us. As you said, there are only 13 official Presidential Libraries. We'd be the 14th if we can do this. That's pretty special company.
And we're Roosevelt. We're not Herbert Hoover. We're not Gerald Ford. We're one of the Rush War Four. And it was in Dickinson that he said, like all Americans, I like big things.
Now, Mr. Jenkinson, you kind of badmouth two Republican presidents. I expect you for equal opportunity here to badmouth two Democratic presidents, too.
I'd be very happy to do so. Sharon and I went to the Jimmy Carter...
You don't have to do that.
I have a long list, including some very recent ones.
We're well over our time here.
Thanks for your time very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a course of action here that we'll prepare. And I think, you know, normally with resolutions, we don't take public comment, but why don't we set this one up where there's a public comment period, too, before we act on this?
Are you speaking as a public hearing or set up like a special assessment district where they have a comment period?
Oh, we could set it up like a public hearing, I guess. But we'll make sure that we'll take comment and put it on the agenda that way, please. Okay? All right. So we have a 515 item. This is a presentation regarding Wells Fargo. Mr. Coling, are you introducing this?
I'll let Mr. Kessel take this one.
Mr. Kessel's gonna do this? Okay.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have a presentation this evening with regard to the Wells Fargo Bond Resolution. With this, originally was a $20 million loan from Wells Fargo to fund water projects primarily. There is a list of projects, I believe that's been provided in your packet. That loan portfolio has dropped to a $15 million request, essentially due to the Water Commission Grant of 18.4 million. That allowed us the opportunity to utilize that grant dollars instead of loan funds. So we've been working diligently with staff from Wells Fargo to come to the table today with a document that we think is palatable to the City Commission. And in the audience, we have a representative, Matt O'Meara. He's been the primary contact for Wells Fargo. Mr. O'Meara, would you like to address the City Commission?
Sure. I brought up, just a very great summary of the financing that we're talking about.
Thank you, everybody, today. Mayor Johnson, commissioners. I know you're all busy, so I'll get down to brass tacks quickly. I've been working with Sean and Matt the last few months to prepare financing that would help fund water and infrastructure programs in your city. The financing is designed to dovetail with the state revolving fund loans that you've been receiving and expect to receive. We are talking about a $15 million financing. We're offering a 10-year term and amortization. The rate that we are talking about is 2.77%. Just to give you an idea of where that is in today's market, the 10-year U.S. Treasury closed at 2.53%. So I think these are pretty fantastic rates. Market is about as good as it's been ever, and that works very well with your city's booming growth. The product that we are talking about is unique to Wells Fargo. It's called an advancing term loan. And what that does is it mirrors up the best of a term loan and then also a construction loan. So your typical construction loan, you have a period where you're drawing down funds. And during that period, you have a short-term interest rate that, you know, you're paying on as you draw those proceeds down. Once that finishes, in a typical construction loan, that's when you lock in the long-term rate. What we've offered is a long-term interest rate wherein you will not be paying any interest on any proceeds until you have actually drawn them down and expended them. So that's sort of the 50,000-foot overview. We're very happy to be, obviously, forming a relationship with the city of Dickinson at this time, and we look forward to working with you in the future. If there's any questions that you have, please fire away.
Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. Are there comments or questions here?
Excellent, right.
Mr. Kessel, Mr. Coling, when you were negotiating this, I know there were issues at one point regarding maybe how much additional debt the city could take on, and if we took on more debt, it would require approval of Wells Fargo. Did we work through those issues?
What Matt didn't tell you is that we've sufficiently beat upon Wells Fargo to see our point in this process, and that we are confident that the procedure is mechanical enough that we will receive approval from Wells Fargo to get the SRF loan. They are well aware that the SRF loan is our primary source of funds for all of our wastewater product, and we will not jeopardize the SRF loan to obtain this loan. So it still does have language that we have to provide them with several formal acknowledgements. It's in the continuing covenant agreement, the CCA. It's the details of this loan project specifically. It is still in there, but we feel confident that the mechanization of that process is sufficient that we let them know what's going on and they approve the loan.
Right. Just to expand upon that, what we've done with the attorneys that have been documenting the transaction is created some covenants that are, you know, really, as Sean mentioned, make it a perfunctory matter that you will be able to draw down this additional debt. I think our interests on this are aligned, and many of the steps that we've outlined, you know, to receive that additional debt are things that Sean and Matt are doing already anyways. So I don't see that being any sort of problem, at least from the bank's perspective.
Mr. Kessel and Mr. Coling, I seem to recall, too, in conversations with you, that there was language in the agreement that would require the city to set its wastewater and water rates at sufficient levels to cover the principal and interest payments. And we saw that as a problem because of our rapid growth in infrastructure build-out that if we expected the user to pay for the full load here, in a sense, our water rates and wastewater rates would be extremely high. It's, at least it's my thinking, that as you receive future impact, oil impact funds from the state, that the first uses of those funds would be applied towards, maybe not to cover the entire principal and interest payments, but we would use monies to subsidize interest and principal payments of our indebtedness. The second priority would be to balance the general fund, and the third priority then would be towards future infrastructure, is the way, at least I would look at that, and I think you tended to agree. Were we successful in negotiating language that doesn't require us to set the water and wastewater rates at the levels just to cover this debt and the SRF debt?
Within the document, we also are dedicating sales tax funds to, as a repayment source for these, for this loan. So not only can we use rates, but we can also use sales tax revenue as a source of repayment, and as you've mentioned, grant revenue. But we have to dedicate a portion of the sales tax. So there is no charge for prepayment, is my understanding. So if we do get grants that will allow us to buy down the principal and interest of the loan in advance of the terms, we can certainly do that as well.
Okay. But we're not required to set those water and wastewater rates as if there was no sales tax money or oil impact fund money?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I have no other questions. Does anybody else have comments or questions? Okay. Well, Mr. Coling, there's a resolution here. Did you want to explain that?
Mr. President, there is. This would be Resolution Number 31-2014, for your records. This resolution would provide authority for you, as Commission President, and for Mr. Kessel, to execute the documents that would close the loan. The project... The projects that are going to be funded by this loan are listed in the resolution. They are the West Side Dedicated Water Main, the 21st West Street Improvements, 40th Street Improvements, the East Side Water Distribution, River Drive Booster Station, the East Side 1 Million Gallon Storage Tank, and Highway 10 Sewer Lift Station. We anticipate, although this is a $15 million loan, we're hoping that construction costs come in under that. And we don't anticipate drawing the full amount of 15 million, but we do have that ability in case we need it. There are three documents that will close the loan. There's an indenture of trust, continuing covenant agreement, and an environmental agreement. We have traded drafts of those agreements between Wells Fargo and our staff, as well as our bond counsel. I think those documents are fairly well in final form. We anticipate closing the loan on, I believe, the 10th of June is the date. And passing this resolution would provide you with the authority to sign those documents and close the loan. City staff would recommend approval. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. You've heard his introduction. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 31-2014.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. Okay. We'll go to the 5:30 timetable item. This is a rezoning petition, and Mr. Kurtan will introduce this item.
Mr. President, commissioners, the first item I have this evening is a rezoning petition from medium-density residential to limited commercial for the property at the northeast corner of 15th Street and State Avenue. It is currently a vacant piece of property. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the one condition of requiring payment in lieu of parkland dedication. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Mr. Coleen, I suppose this is Ordinance 1552?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this time, we'd invite anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed Ordinance 1552. You may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move. We approve first reading of Ordinance 1552.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kurtan, you have a second item?
The next item is a rezoning petition from general commercial to downtown commercial for the property located at the southwestern corner of Highway 22 in Vallard. It is, as mentioned prior, it is currently zoned general commercial. The planning and zoning and city staff recommend approval. This property would fill in the downtown commercial that we have to the west and to the east and make that consistent in conformance with one another.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Mr. Coleen, 1553? All right. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding proposed Ordinance 1553, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of Ordinance Number 1553.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? No discussion will vote. Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to the 5:40 timetable. This is a special use permit. And Director, Community Development Director Kurtan will also introduce this item.
Mr. President, commissioners, as you have noted, this is a special use permit for the construction of electric substation by Rough Rider Electric. The site is 10850 35th Avenue, or 35th Street Southwest. It is located one-half mile east of the intersection of 35th Street and 21st Street. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the attached 13 conditions. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this resolution? So you can come to the podium. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment on this Resolution 32? Mr. Coleen? Okay. So any comments or questions then by the commission? Not? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Sir, second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. There's a second item, Mr. Kurtan?
Yes, the second special use permit is by the applicant Badlands Hope. This is for a medical office in the high-density residential zoning district. Within that zoning district, a medical office is required to have a special use permit. Special use permit is for a crisis pregnancy center. The property is 310 Third Street West or at St. Patrick's Church. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the five conditions of approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment regarding this resolution? Not? Are there any comments by city commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve Resolution 33-2014.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. You're welcome. We have a 5:50 timetable item. This is a comp plan amendment, and Mr. Kurtan is introducing this also.
Mr. President, this is an amendment to the urban service boundary as part of the 2035 comprehensive plan. As part of the comprehensive plan, we have future land use maps and other amendments with that and a process to do so. The site in question is westerly of the existing city limits, south of I-94 and west of the Business Loop. They are currently outside the urban service boundary. And since they're outside the urban service boundary, they are not eligible for urban services. They are petitioning the commission to include them within it. As part of their application material, staff required them to work with our two planning consultants, Apex and KLJ, to perform sewer and water analysis of the property. Based upon those analyses, city staff was able to confirm that within the next year to two years after the construction of our infrastructure in the general vicinity, that the property would have sufficient sewer and water service. Therefore, we are recommending approval. Mr. President?
Okay. I have a question before we open it up for public comment. Here's my understanding, and I guess my question is, do I have the understanding correct? That when, if we amend our urban service boundary, essentially what we're saying is to that property, we expect to be able to deliver city services within a 10-year period to the property?
That is correct. That's our goal for that.
That's our goal. I mean, that's what I recall from the comprehensive planning process that we went through, that anything within the urban service boundary, we're saying, within 10 years, we believe we'd have water and sewer to that property. If you're outside the urban service boundary, there's just no.
We're not planning for that. We're going to plan all of our capital improvements and the funding mechanisms for that to be within that urban service area.
Now, having said that, certainly, we don't, the city is not growing equally in all directions. In this case, this is on the west edge of town. The city's growing quite dramatically that direction. So this area, it's likely that we could have water and sewer there well before the 10-year period.
Absolutely. Based upon the two analyses that we provided as part of your packet materials, we feel that when the million-gallon storage tank is built off of 21st Street, just to the west or part of the Pine Crest facility, and then when the lift station is built just to the southeast of the site, that we feel that both urban and both sewer and water services would be provided. That being said, we have, we would only allow development to occur there. There still is a process of approval. We've all heard about the expectations that Barron's Vista wants to move forward with. But urban services will only be provided once that infrastructure is provided for that. So I would anticipate within two years or so that we would be able to provide the services that they need to move forward on the project contingent upon us ultimately approving that.
Okay. Thank you. So this is Ordinance 1554. Anyone from the public that would like to comment may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments on this proposed ordinance. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Are there other comments or questions by city commissioners?
I just have one. We have talked to the county and Southwest Water, right? Since this is still county?
They're aware of it, but we have not formally submitted things as we normally will do that. Whenever they, they're in the process of moving forward contingent upon the urban service area, the amending and the approval of that. Then they're going to come forth with a planning and development. At that point, we will be forwarded on our comments to the various agencies for them to provide comments. I want to definitely emphasize that from staff's level, their expectation for their project, we have only done a very, very cursory review of that. And there's still plenty of negotiations and getting a greater concept of their project. That being said, we're in general support of it, but we do have some reservations with respect to the overall project itself. So they will be notified as part of the normal approval process. This is just establishing the ability for them to have urban services whenever the capacity is available to them.
Good. President Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Kessel.
Commissioner Duquardt, I'd like to also mention that this land is within the Dickinson West Subarea Plan that we have identified earlier as a planning mechanism that we wanted to go through and hired KLJ to review the services, or urban extension of services, transportation network, annexation plan and such. I have been in front of the county commission and discussed that specific project two different times. So they are aware that the city is planning to grow more west than in any other direction. So in a broad sense, they are aware that planning is happening in that area.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding first reading of 1554?
I'll make motion to approve first reading of Ordinance 1554.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Jackson, second in the motion. Any discussion? No discussion will vote. Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. That ends. The timetable items will go down to Item 6, Engineering. We have an issue here regarding the water distribution modeling and system master plan. And Ms. Marcek will present this item to us.
Good evening, President Johnson and commissioners. I believe on the table in front of you is an amended, or revised attachment for Amendment 1. Okay. I got that today, so I wanted to make sure that you were able to get a copy of that.
Okay, I think we found it.
Okay. This amendment is to go along with our task order W-1 that we have with KLJ. And it has to do with our water modeling services. As we get new proposed developments coming in, we have additional water modeling that we request them to do on a case-by-case basis. And that is what this amendment has to do with.
So you're asking us to approve how many dollars here in amendments?
$44,900.
Yeah. Can you explain water modeling? I mean, for the public that may not really know what this means?
Sure. As we're adding all this water infrastructure in the city, KLJ has been tracking all that and tracking what we use. And as new developments get proposed, they track what we anticipate the new developments to use. And they let us know, looking at these things, if there's water capacity in those pipes to get where they need to go, what we need to do to get the water there, how much capacity, is it enough? Is it not enough? You know, I'm sure you guys get that discussion here a lot. But that's basically what we ask of KLJ. And it's on a case-by-case as different developments come forward or different issues come forward, what capacity is there and if we need to do other things to make it work, or if it's just not going to work.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
President Johnson, I have a question. What does it cost of the adjusted agreement amount?
$44,900.
Okay. On this, I have quite a different. The cost to four additional developments is the 44.9? Is that what you have?
Yep. The original contract was for $180,000, and the adjusted agreement amount is $224,900.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Would there be a motion regarding this item?
So move.
Second.
We have the motion to approve the amendment and the second. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'll abstain from the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? Hearing none then will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquardt?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. The chair votes aye. So the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to engineering reports, and Mr. Kubus.
I just have a few reports and nothing to act on today. We had received many comments from the public, from staff, from just about everyone on what the tube counters were, what we were counting traffic on. A couple of months ago, the DOT had laid out counters all around town. And they have that information available now. In front of you, I left, there's a spreadsheet with a green heading on there titled 6B1 with just a sampling of some of the traffic counts that the DOT had taken. And what I did here was just compared them to previous year counts. And so three things that I'd like to point out on the spreadsheet. The first one would be, if you look at the third entry there, State Avenue, north of Empire, that's our highest volume count off of Highway 22 in town. 11,000, almost 11,900 vehicles per day. Also 21st Street, the third from the bottom, 21st Street, west of Highway 22, is just about identical, 11,800 vehicles per day. So two of our busier streets there in town off of Highway 22. The next thing I'd like to point out, just, I took a quick look at, not necessarily intersections within town, but just the traffic coming into town. We all talk about and see and hear Highway 22 north being very, very busy, which it is. But if you look at the two, the first and the last, Highway 22 entries, Highway 22 south of 8th Street, so coming into town from the airport side, traffic's up 23% in the last two years there, about 8,100 vehicles a day. And then Highway 22. hundred vehicles a day. And then Highway 22, south of 40th Street, on the north side of town, traffic's up only 5%, but at a volume of thirteen thousand five hundred vehicles a day. Also coming in, I didn't look at the interstate necessarily, but coming in from the east and west, the two, Highway 10 entries there, both up significantly, 16 and 36%. So traffic really increasing coming into town from all directions. The last thing I'd point out, we do have a few of what people might think are anomalies. We have an area on the East Business Loop where the traffic is down 3%. And we'd say, how could that be? Traffic on the East Business Loop is pretty heavy, and I think most people would agree that it's consistently gone up year over year. But what you need to look at is there's three entries. There's two entries for the East Business Loop and one for Eighteenth Avenue East. Eighteenth Avenue East is a fairly new street in town. And when that was constructed, I think people started using that as a bypass around our 10th Avenue East intersection. So in the East Business Loop, right by the interchange by Tiger Discount, traffic's up 10%. And a little further down the road, closer to town, traffic is down 3%. I think a lot of that traffic is using Eighteenth Avenue East. You can see that traffic is up 27%. So some interesting numbers. These are, you know, only 24-hour counts, maybe 48-hour counts, and they average them out to vehicles per day. So there can be some anomalies in these numbers, but in general, our traffic, there's some outliers where traffic's went up significantly, but at many of these locations, traffic's up around 20%. That's in addition to increases of about 25% from 2010 to 2012. So this traffic growth is exponential. So just wanted to give an update. All this information is available on the DOT's website. I've listed that down below. It's GIS.dotnd.gov/external/transinfo. It's GIS-based. You can zoom in, click on any of the counts that they have, and look at this info. So it's pretty insightful, but again, needs to be taken with a grain of salt. Are there any questions on any of these traffic numbers?
Pretty high.
Some of them are getting up there. The next report that I would like to give you is on a stormwater ordinance amendment. And while we don't have any amendment to our ordinance prepared today, what I'd like to do, and I've asked several consultants who are working for and in the city of Dickinson, to come together as a think tank and review our ordinance, decide it's, you know, what needs to be salvaged out of that ordinance, what needs to be revised. And I've asked about a half dozen consultants to come in. We're shooting for the week of June 16th to get together and visit about our stormwater ordinance, and hopefully through that process, come back with a rewrite or revision to our stormwater ordinance. I know there's been a lot of discussion and interpretation of the ordinance, and it's, I think in the past, caused some delays to some of our development projects. So we're going to try and bring a lot of engineering professionals together and create a more streamlined stormwater ordinance. So hopefully sometime in July or August, we'll have an update, a new ordinance for our stormwater. And then the last report that I'd like to give is an update on our transportation RFP. A few meetings ago, we talked about putting out an RFP for transportation enhancement projects. We had seven projects on the list, ranging from intersection designs, capacity improvements, and some special improvement districts. Those proposals were due last week, and we received nine proposals. Many of the firms who submitted proposals had submitted on multiple projects. Our hope is to have the selection done sometime mid-June and have contracts, some of the contracts, maybe not all of them, but some of the contracts ready for the commission meeting on July 7th. So we'd like to keep those moving forward and hopefully even make some of the smaller improvements later this fall. I had one other short report. We do have an ongoing construction update. Mr. Kessel talked about it earlier. Just wanted to update the commission and those listening on Channel 19 of some traffic delays that will be happening here very shortly. Some of them will involve road closures that will significantly affect travel in the upcoming weeks and months. The first one is on Empire Road. Some of you may have noted that there's a detour signed. It's not officially closed down yet, but Empire Road from 23rd Avenue to the Business Loop will be closed very shortly, this week. And that closure will remain in effect for most of the construction season. Traffic will be detoured on 23rd Avenue and over to Fairway. So just so people are aware of that, the Empire Road north of the new hospital site is going to be closed and will affect a significant amount of traffic. The other two closures right now are not necessarily closures, but on 21st Street, we'd approved an emergency repair. That repair hasn't taken place yet, but will shortly, as soon as we have contractor availability. When that contractor is available, 21st Street West from State Avenue to 30th Avenue will be closed, and we hope that that closure will be less than a week. But we anticipate that to happen in the next two weeks. The last update that I would give is not a closure, but just that might affect some traffic, is on Energy Drive. We're having a mill and overlay that's ongoing right now. And it actually extends past Energy Drive into Stark County, all the way out to the city landfill. There's ongoing work there with pilot car operations, so you can expect delays if you're traveling on Energy Drive and Lehigh Drive. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Are there any questions or comments for city engineer?
I just have one for Mr. Kubus. On Empire now, when they close that past 23rd, that won't be open again then later, will it? That's where it's going to be permanently closed from old Highway 10?
On Empire?
Right.
Empire Road, it'll be closed for a better part of the construction season now. And when it reopens, it won't connect out to the Business Loop like it does today. It's actually going to turn and connect to Fairway Street. So when that reopens, it'll be, it won't go out paralleling the interstate anymore. It'll turn south and connect into Fairway Street.
Okay, good. I want the public to know that. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay. We'll move to tab seven, Public Works, and Director Zaroff will take us through four items there. First one is Energy Drive project.
President Johnson, commission, thank you. And I guess segue right in from what Mr. Kubus had said on Energy Drive. We have a project, a mill and overlay project. It's a project with Stark County. It goes from the East Flare down to the city landfill, like Mr. Kubus mentioned. With this project, it was bid out. We jumped on the project with the county. In doing so, we did that to get the prices that the county had and to try to get that project done. Knowing that, because we did do it quick, I knew there would be some change orders. And so before you tonight, I do have one of the change orders that we're looking at. It's some subcuts in front of the International Dealer along Energy Drive. And we had also discussed some other change orders, but tonight, we'll be just bringing to commission approval of change order for the dollar amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty cents to finish that area in front of the International and getting rid of some of the areas along the road. So I guess I'm requesting permission to approve the change order. Do you have any questions?
I guess I'm not clear what the change order really is for when you say subcuts. What is that?
The original contract was for mill and overlay. There's some areas that need to be dug out and prepared and an area of concrete and subcuts along the Nelson International Building. So this is removing some soil, placing it back, and preparing it for a mill and overlay, excuse me.
Okay.
In your packet, it does tell you the units and what is done. There's some geotech fabric, aggregate base course, and some excavation of the areas, removal of some bitumen and surfing. And there is a list in your packet explaining that.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Would there be a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve the change order.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Duquard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion carries.
Thank you, commission. Next, I have a consideration to accept bid on, in the packet, I have a dozer, and I didn't get it already, or ready for commission, but it's for a landfill tract-type tractor with a waste handling package. I handed out our recommendation. We had three bids, a Case, a John Deere, and a Cat. There were some variations with the Case and John Deere. The price of the Cat is looking at three hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars. That is the highest machine, but the other two, we feel, didn't meet the specifications. And we had budgeted in 2013, a total cost of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So we feel this is within what was budgeted. And we are requesting to accept the bid of the Caterpillar D6T Waste Handler from Butler Machinery. And I'm opening up for discussion.
In your memo, where you say requested, these were items then that were specified?
Correct. They were in the specifications. As you go through this, you know, some of these, for example, the Case, some of the ground clearance, we see some issues. There is, they have a 24-inch heavy-duty truck. We requested a 30-inch track. And you can kind of go through the bullet points that Aaron Prouser, sanitation manager, and Brent Coulter, our fleet manager, did review. And they're here, too, if you have any additional questions.
Mr. Coling, did you review these quotes at all in regards to the compliance with specifications or non-compliance?
Mr. President, Mr. Zaroff and I did discuss the matter, and I am in concurrence with his recommendation.
Other comments, questions?
I just have one. Can you go back to Butler and say, you know, we have an allowance of three hundred seventy-five thousand? Can they adjust it? Or do you have to take their bid? It isn't very much more.
It's a bid with trade, no, this isn't with trade. This is a bid. I guess that's their bid. I don't, I don't know at that point if we go back and negotiate, if that's what you're asking, Commissioner Duquard.
Yes. Have we ever done that?
Mr. President, Commissioner Duquard, there are restrictions in our ability to do that. Generally speaking, once we issue specifications, it's up to vendors to provide us with a piece of equipment or a proposal that meets those specifications. And then we judge from there what the most beneficial offer is and most beneficial bid is for the particular project. It really isn't within our purview to take a bid and then negotiate from there with one vendor without giving the same opportunity to negotiate with another vendor. We really take the bids as they come in from the vendors and evaluate them from there.
Mr. Zaroff, did the Caterpillar meet all the specified requirements?
It had one minor variation. It had a two-speed windshield wiper versus an intermittent windshield wiper. That was it. So we figure that was very minor in as far as its specifications. One thing, too, I don't know if it does say in this, but that machine is available immediately, I believe, which is another, we feel is another plus.
While you've heard their recommendation, is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President, I'd move we approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve the recommendation and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have another large purchase of vehicles. We had a bid opening for three 2014 Side Load Refuse Collection trucks on May 20th. The city received bids for the purchase of the three units with the option, with an option to take cash purchase or with trade. We received one bid from Northern Truck Equipment for three Peterbilt's with a 22-yard Heil Rapid Rail compaction body for a cash price of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand seventy-four dollars. And then with trade, the price would be seven hundred and eight thousand seven seventy-four. Again, budgeted, we had seven hundred and five thousand. I feel we're well within that range. It's a recommendation of city staff to purchase the units before you for the total amount of seven eight oh eight seven seventy-four with trade-in.
Thank you, Mr. Zaroff. You've heard his report and recommendations. Are there any comments or questions?
My only question is, do we know that there's not some other community that would like that other equipment? Or don't we want to?
I guess I haven't talked to other communities. I don't know if, I don't think they've been, have been. I know Aaron Prouser, sanitation manager, I know at one point, I think you've talked to other communities, but...
Okay. I'm seeing Aaron shaking his head, no. So that's fine. I just wanted to make sure if there was somebody out there that wanted this stuff, maybe we accommodate that. If not, we should move forward.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion to approve the recommendation and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Duquard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and motion carries.
Thank you, President Johnson and commission. Mr. Kubus did talk about most of the projects going on. I just have one note here that we do have a lift station 12 pre-construction meeting Thursday. So that's another project that will be started. If you remember, that is a lift station on the north side of the interstate, and it'll include all of our SCADA equipment for, to bring in all of our infrastructure, lift stations and tanks. So that's about the only update I have currently, unless you have other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zaroff. Are there any questions or comments for Public Works Director Zaroff? All right. We'll move over to community development. Mr. Kurtan.
Mr. President, the first item, I'll defer to city attorney Colen, who did the heavy lifting and should take the honor for the 15th Street agreement.
Mr. President, commissioners, what you have before you is a cost participation agreement for 15th Street. This agreement provides for the construction of 15th Street from 30th Avenue West, going westerly about a half mile, a little less than a half mile. It is situated between the Roar's Westridge First Development and the Meyer Pinecrest Development. Westridge is on the south of the road and Pinecrest on the north. Pursued to this agreement, the two developers have agreed to Pursued to this agreement, the two developers have agreed to share the cost of installation and construction design of that road in its entirety. The city will not have any public funds into the construction of this road. Be happy to take any questions from you, but under this proposal, those two developers would contribute the funds to construct that road, and hopefully have it done as soon as possible, given the construction schedules. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coling regarding his introduction of this Not, is there a motion regarding the agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing nonwill vote, Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So, Mr. Coling, are you taking these development agreements then?
Mr. President, I'll take the first one for Pinecrest, and I'll defer to Mr. Cortan on the next one for the Great Lakes Development Agreement. The Pinecrest Development Agreement for you is a development agreement for the Pinecrest subdivision, located westerly of 30th Avenue West and north of 15th Street. The agreement provides for installation of a great deal of public infrastructure. The developer of Pinecrest will, under this agreement, convey a two-acre parcel to the city for construction of the West Water Tower, the 1 million gallon storage facility that will be built along 21st. There is also infrastructure proposed to be developed by Pinecrest to connect water and sewer from 15th Street northerly through the property to service all of that property, and most likely, any property that would develop beyond the Pinecrest subdivision as well. Be happy to take any questions on it. The agreement is fairly detailed and fairly lengthy, and we have worked hard and diligently with the developer to get this done. So, be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there questions or comments for him? Not, is there a motion regarding the development agreement?
I'll move we approve the agreement.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing nonwill vote, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. The Great Lakes Development then is going to be introduced by Mr. Cortan.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this development agreement is much less complex than the latter one. This is a very standard agreement. It does specify specifics that are tied to issuance of building permits, such as a hammerhead turnaround, road phasing, access points off of 32nd Street Southwest, a 75-foot conservation easement, and stormwater management plan. City staff has recommended approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Cortan? Would there be a motion regarding this agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing nonwill vote, Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the last item we have under Community Development tonight is the Great Lakes Final Plat. This is for the Great Lakes subdivision located easterly of Highway 22 and south of 32nd Street Southwest. It consists of 20 lots, and the size is approximately 140 acres. The Platte and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. This is Resolution 34.
That's correct, Mr. President.
34-2014. So, are there any comments or questions regarding this plat? Not, is there a motion regarding Resolution 34-2014?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
We have the second. Any discussion? Hearing nonwill vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Cortan?
Not this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Anything by city commissioners? Not, if there's someone from the public that would like to address the commission, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public?
Mr. President, you went kind of through the commission real fast.
Oh, did I miss you? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have one item, and I think Mr. Cortan, this might be in your field here. The street that's going out to Menards, what is the situation with that, with the manholes below level? Where are we at? What's happening there?
Commissioner Steiner, when we had inspected those streets with the developer and the contractor last fall, what we made was a conditional acceptance of those streets, and we understood that even at that time, before the spring thaw, some of those utilities had begun to settle. And what we did is, we accepted those streets with the understanding that in the one-year maintenance and warranty period, that all those manholes and gate valves that had settled would need to be raised up. Instead of doing it last fall, though, before acceptance, let's just wait for a spring thaw and go through that freeze-thaw cycle, and I think they have settled more, and maybe more of them have settled. But the intent is that the developer needs to get their contractor back in to fix all the utilities that have settled.
Do we know when that developer will do that?
We didn't have a timeframe set, other than it needs to be done within the one-year warranty period, which basically takes us through this construction season.
Has full payment been made on that construction?
The city didn't make any payment on the construction, so...
It's all developer's.
Correct.
But we still have the punch list, that's got to be to our approval.
Correct.
Correct. And we have not released it yet.
Well, no, it's in the warranty period, so. The development at the time wasn't 100% complete. The streets were completed, and the water and sewer were completed, but the, some of the ponds still had some work, so the development itself hadn't been accepted because some of the stormwater was still outstanding. We'll review that all this summer again, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnson just slipped something in or two. I'd like to encourage the public to get out and vote next Tuesday, June 10th.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stuckert and Mr. Steiner. Anybody else I missed? Okay. Once again, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Doesn't appear to be, so at this time, the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, second.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries.